Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regularly scheduled March 13th School Board Meeting. At this time, please rise if you are able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. To the Board, we are working off of a revised agenda tonight. We included the recognition of the Eastview High School Varsity State High Kick Champions and the Varsity Jazz Team. We removed the copier leases from the consent agenda and the 2023 Excel Awards recipient. With that, is there a motion to approve the revised agenda as outlined?
So moved. Second?
Motion by Suchin and a second by Joel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries on a seven-zero vote. Now is our most fun time to celebrate just a few of the amazing things happening in our district. To start us off, I would like to invite Coach Holman up to the podium to introduce us to the Rosemont High School Varsity Cheer Team.
Yeah, we have a big team. All right. Good evening, Board members, Chairperson Johnson and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Sally Holman. I'm the varsity cheer coach at Rosemont High School. This evening, I present to you the 2023 Large Non-Tumble D1 National Champion Cheer Team, who also placed second in the World School, competing against teams from around the world. This team spent over 15,600 minutes practicing and perfecting their routine. This team of athletes perfected and executed stunts we had only dreamed about in past seasons, allowing us to compete with the most difficult routine in the program's history. For many of my athletes, this has been years of training, commitment, and dedication to this program. We are incredibly proud of this team and honored to bring the national title to Rosemont High School.
Amazing, just fantastic. Next up in our recognition portion, I'd like to welcome Principal Henderson to the podium to introduce us to the Region Six Teacher of the Year Award for Magnet Schools of America.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the School Board and Superintendent Krieger. It is with great pleasure to introduce to you Erin Paulson, Visual and Cultural Arts Teacher at Glacier Hills Elementary School of Arts and Science. She has recently been named Magnet Schools of America Teacher of the Year for Region Six. Ms. Paulson completed a rigorous application in the fall showcasing her dedication to magnet programming and innovative practices within her role. This included her cultivating community partnerships, promoting diversity and equity for students, and leading professional development not only locally but nationally. This award recognizes and elevates her instrumental work as a magnet instructor. Ms. Paulson will be recognized at the Magnet Schools of America National Conference in April this year in Dallas, Texas. We continue to be grateful and appreciative of the tremendous support we receive from our community and school board as a magnet school. Thank you for joining me in celebrating Erin Paulson.
Thank you. I'm really grateful to work in this district. We have incredible resources, and I credit my success to the really hard-working staff at Glacier. So, thank you.
All right, excellent. Next up, I would like to welcome Coach Vargis to the podium to introduce us to the Eastview High School State High Kick Champions.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, School Board members, and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Taylor Vargis, and I am the head coach of the dance team at Eastview High School. This was my first year as head coach, and I'm honored to introduce and recognize the student-athletes on our team who contributed to a successful year and worked hard together to uphold the legacy of the Lightning Dance Team. Led by 15 graduating seniors, Lightning Dance Team earned the title of South Suburban Conference Champions in High Kick, the Section 1 AAA Champions in both High Kick and Jazz, and the Class AAA State Champions in High Kick, and took third place in Class AAA State Jazz. The team also received the Academic All-State Award, and five of our seniors here tonight received the All-State Academic Award with GPAs over a 3.85 average. More than the medals, awards, or accolades they earned and received, this year's team was one that learned lessons of being resilient and maintaining poise under great pressure. We learned the depth of our grit, our relationships, our tenacity, our respect for ourselves and one another, and we grew in our perspective of a "we versus me" mentality, and ultimately grew in the depth of love and care for one another. I'm so proud to coach these young women who are here with me tonight, and would like to take the time to introduce each of them to you now. I'll start by introducing the State High Kick Champion Team. Please step forward when I say your name. Some are gone tonight. They are participating at their dance teams or at their studios. Genevieve Anderson, Peyton Arns, Mia Barnes, Ava Bellows, Riley Benz, Meadow Burke, Adriana Crawford, Isabella Crawford, Jasmine Duane, Ava Jervik, Addison Hedrick, Ainsley Hickock, Amelia Capell, Julia Kinch, Megan Knudsen, Claire Koshyer, Sophia Koshyer, Nico Kruger, Peyton Lecker, Ariana Navarro, Ashlyn Rustad, Maya Schmidt, Alexis Stolpa, Mylana Tong, Ellie Ullent, Lola Van Dyke, Holly Varner, Abby Williams, Ava Wood, and Athena Zahn. That is the State High Kick Champion Team. And lastly, I'll introduce to you those who contributed to the State Jazz Third Place Team. Mia Barnes, Adriana Crawford, Isabella Crawford, Jasmine Duane, Ainsley Hickock, Julia Kinch, Claire Koshyer, Sophia Koshyer, Nico Kruger, Peyton Lecker, Ariana Navarro, Maya Schmidt, Alexis Stolpa, Mylana Tong, Holly Varner, Abby Williams, Ava Wood, and Athena Zahn. Thank you for your time in celebrating us and these athletes tonight.
Awesome job, Coach. Congratulations. Awesome job. Congratulations. So great. You're welcome. So glad you guys could be here tonight. Oh my gosh, congratulations. Congratulations. Awesome job. Congratulations. Thanks for being here, guys. Congratulations. Awesome. Congratulations. Awesome. Congratulations. Two medals, too. Look at that. Congratulations. Congratulations. Awesome job. So proud of you guys. Congratulations. Awesome job. Great job. You're very welcome. Congratulations. Welcome. Congratulations. Awesome job. Being here.
Always fantastic being able to start our meetings with some recognition. Next on the agenda is our superintendent's recognition, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger.
Thank you. We have a lot more to celebrate tonight. So I'll start off with congratulations to Lucas Gerton of Rosemont High School on winning the one-meter diving championship at the Class 2A Boys Swimming and Diving State Tournament earlier this month. And congratulations to the Eastview High School Chess Team on winning the K-12 Division of the Minnesota Scholastic Chess Association State Tournament earlier this month. Congratulations to Blackhawk Middle School on taking second place in the Middle School Division of the State Science Olympiad on March 4th. Congratulations to the Rosemont High School Girls Hockey Team on competing in the Class 2A State Tournament last month. Congratulations and good luck to the Dakota United Hawks Adaptive Floor Hockey Teams in this week's state tournaments at Bloomington Jefferson High School. The PI Team will play at 6:30 p.m., and the CI Team will play at 8:00 p.m. this Friday, March 17th. Congratulations and good luck to the Egan High School Girls Basketball Team on qualifying for the Class 4A State Tournament this week. They will play at 2:00 p.m. Wednesday, March 15th, at Williams Arena. I told you there were a lot of celebrations. We're still going. Congratulations to the seven District 196 High School students who finished in second or third place at the Boys and Girls State Wrestling Tournaments earlier this month. We will invite them to be recognized at a future School Board Meeting. And finally, later this evening, the Board will be asked to approve resolutions designating this week as Cultural Family Advocates Employee Appreciation Week in District 196. Our cultural family advocates serve as a bridge between school and culturally diverse students and families. They foster academic and social growth, and they provide support for staff on how to meet the unique needs of our diverse students and families. At this time, I would like to ask our cultural family advocates who are with us this evening to stand and be recognized.
Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent Krieger, and you can take as long as you need if we're talking about recognition. We don't have anyone signed up for special communication tonight, so next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Tonight on our consent agenda, we have minutes of the January 9th, 2023 Regular School Board Meeting, minutes of the February 13th, 2023 Regular School Board Meeting, minutes of the March 6th, 2023 Special School Board Meeting, gifts, quarterly gifts, grants, quarterly advertising revenue, Treasurers' Report for January 2023, Summary of Claims for January 2023, Schedule of Investments for January 2023, Revenues and Expenditures Report for January 2023, Audit Services, Banking Services, Dakota Ridge School 2023 Renovation, Personnel, Employment Agreement, Termination and Non-Renewal of Probationary Teachers 2023-24, Carpet and Other Flooring Replacement, Silverbell Learning Center Building Automation System Upgrade, Resolution Establishing Absentee Voting Locations, and Resolution Appointing Election Judges. Are there any items on the consent agenda that Board members would like to remove today? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval. Second?
Motion by Jackie and a second by Bianca. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries on a seven-zero vote. Next on the agenda is our other action items. First up, I'd like to welcome Mr. Virgil Jones to the podium to introduce our 2023 through 2026 Achievement and Integration Plan.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, and members of the District 196 School Board. My name is Virgil Jones. I serve as the Director of Equity and Inclusion for District 196. I am joined by Violetta Hernandez Espinosa, Coordinator of Equity Inclusion, and Yen Nguyen Vu, who is also a part of our department. And I also want to recognize Suzie Yermishkin, who has also been a valuable member of our department. They all have completed and contributed many late nights to constructing the 2023-2026 Achievement and Integration Plan. Our staff and the committee, which includes over 40 different members from the community, began work on the Achievement and Integration Plan many months ago. Along the way, those individuals across the district came together as a community and have been involved in the planning process. We would like to extend our gratitude, both as a district office and as a department, to the teachers, administrators, and parents, students, cultural family advocates, caregivers, Board members, cabinet members, and other departments at the district office that have supported the work that was needed in order to make this plan a reality. And a special thank you to our Steering Committee members who attended additional meetings, Steve Trone, Sarah Dahl, Calvin Kleesling, Logan Schultz, Amy Miller, Paul Olson, and Tony Etchel. What I'd like to do tonight is touch base, and I'll start with a slideshow to talk a little bit about the Achievement and Integration Plan that's developed every three years and directly supports students in District 196. At the conclusion of this slideshow, I'd like to recommend approval of the plan to submit to the Minnesota Department of Education this week on March 15th. The purpose of the plan really has a number of different components that are involved with it. One is the Minnesota State statute, the councils that are involved, District 196 being a racially-isolated district, and then District 196 also having schools that are racially identifiable. The Minnesota State statute that guides our plan is really born out of the desegregation plan from the state legislature and has evolved over the years in order to provide support for school districts, in order to support for core areas, or actually three main areas, or actually four areas, I'm sorry. Those four areas are, the purpose of the plan is to pursue racial and economic integration, to increase student academic achievement, to create educational outcomes that are equitable, and then reduce the academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds. This slide that is up right now represents the myriad of different programs, people, and opportunities that we have in our district to have equity woven throughout the fabric of our district. So while we're going to talk about the Achievement and Integration Plan, I want to make sure that folks know that it is just one part of what we do as a district that has a specific funding source from the Department of Education. MDE has designated District 196 as a racially-isolated district. That determination is as a result of the percentage of students of color in our school district being 20% higher than an adjoining district that connects to us. Because we are racially-isolated, we are required to partner with adjoining districts to provide integration opportunities for both their district and ours. This partnership is called the Multi-District Collaboration Council that also includes NAIPAC members from both districts. During the most recent plan that we're currently in, we partnered with South Washington County, Stillwater, and Hayleys. We provided various activities across the district in collaboration with those districts in order to provide integration activities. We again will be working with South Washington County, Stillwater, and Emmer Grove Heights in order to accomplish those same goals in this upcoming plan. Our Community Collaboration Council is born out of our Equity Advisory Council, so the majority of the membership comes from our Equity Advisory Council, but there are members from the community that also participate in the Community Collaboration Council that are not part of the Equity Advisory Council. That Equity Advisory Council and the Community Collaboration Council consist of cultural family advocates, students, parents, teachers, administrators, coordinators, cabinet members, Board members, NAIPAC members, members of the American Indian Education Program, as well as the superintendent. We've conducted over 35 planning meetings, four multi-district Collaboration Council meetings, seven different Community Collaboration Council Steering Committee meetings, as well as six core Community Collaboration Council meetings in order to create the plan. So in relation to our racially-isolated district, we have three main goals that are constant and are required by the state. One is an integration goal, the other one is an achievement goal, and then a teacher equity goal. Because we're racially-isolated, it's important that we also adhere to the integration strategy requirement with a partner district, which I spoke about before with South Washington County, as well as Stillwater and Emmer Grove Heights. We also have complementary goals that are focused on post-secondary, college, career, and life, as well as engagement, family engagement, community engagement, and inclusion. As a racially-isolated district, we've chosen to focus, as an integration goal, on our gifted and talented process in order to remove the gap that exists in between the cultural representation within our district and the representation in the gifted and talented program. As achievement goals, we've chose to focus on our ACT scores, as well as our MCA scores, and the teacher equity goal is really focused on retaining, recruiting teachers of color in our district. And as part of the integration strategy, the district partnership will involve some summer programs, summer enrichment activities that will happen over the course of the next three years. Our complementary goals are really focused on post-secondary, college, and career in life. They will not only include four-year, two-year college, but also opportunities for students to be engaged in trade and technical careers as well. And then our engagement and inclusion component really focuses on the work that we do every day with the help of our cultural family advocates, and our goal was to make them a more prominent component of the plan moving forward as a result of where they were, how they were identified in the previous plan. This year, we were notified that racially-identifiable schools again take on the same indicator based on their 20% over-representation compared to other students in the district in other schools. So Oakridge Elementary School is a new school for us that was on as a racially-identifiable school years ago and has had an increase in student population that has now given it that designation. Cedar Park Elementary has been a racially-identifiable school for, this is the second year that they will be racially-identifiable. And each one of those schools has the similar required goals, an integration goal, achievement goal, a teacher equity goal, as well as an integration strategy, as well to work with those students in those buildings, as well to provide different enrichment activities as well. Echo Park Elementary historically has been identified as a racially-identifiable school, but as of February 21st this year, they are no longer identified because their percentage has dropped below that 20% marker for schools to be identified. We've chosen, as a district and a department, to maintain our relationship in the programming that we have historically had at Echo Park in order to continue to support their programs and the other components that we support through the Achievement and Integration Plan because they've been on for quite a long time, and it's only a small percentage difference between them being on and off right now. So there is a possibility come next fall that they potentially could be back on the list again. And then I'll end here and ask the Board to approve the 2023-2026 Achievement and Integration Plan and take any questions.
Thank you, Virgil. Before we get into questions or comments, this is an action item tonight, so do I have a motion to approve the Achievement and Integration Plan?
So moved. Second?
Motion by Suchin, second by Joel. With that, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from Board members? Seems pretty straightforward. One thing that I took note of, too, is that this is a fantastic Achievement and Integration Plan that your team has put together, but this is only a portion of what your department does for the district. So even with this giant plan together, this is just a portion of your overall strategy that your team is doing. So I wanted to recognize that, too, because this seems like a lot, but there's still more on top of this that you're doing every day.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, there was a motion to approve by Suchin, seconded by Joel. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries on a seven-zero vote. Thank you. Next on the agenda, I'd like to welcome Shelley Munson to the podium to discuss employee group health insurance.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the Board, and Superintendent Krieger. I bring before you tonight the exhibit Employee Group Health Insurance. The district's had a self-funded arrangement for employee health insurance with Health Partners, providing the stop-loss coverages and administrative services since July 1, 2012. Since then, premium increases have averaged just under 2.5% a year, with increases ranging from 1% to 7%. The 2023 health plan year will be the second year of a two-year agreement with Health Partners to again continue to provide administrative services and stop-loss coverages, which is helping keep our fixed costs essentially flat for this coming year. The district's insurance committee recommended a premium increase of 10.5% for the 2024 plan year. This recommendation's due to rising costs, increased utilization, and the number of high claimants that is higher than typical. It will continue to protect the plan's fiscal integrity with a projected reserve in 2023-24 of approximately $21 million by the end of the plan year after accounting for the plan's runout. Just to let you know, this district plan is not unique in seeing medical costs increasing and utilization rebounding after there were delays for treatments during COVID-19. Other districts with self-funded plans are seeing similar or higher increases. A recent article in the Star Tribune referenced 11% increase in medical costs in the state. The insurance committee studied the plan projections provided by our benefits consultant and did not come to this recommendation lightly. They feel strongly that the increase is needed to protect the financial viability of the plan into the future and to maintain the plan benefits that our employees value. and to maintain the plan benefits that our employees value. The administration agrees with this recommendation and asks that you approve the exhibit. I've just summarized, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Shelley. Before we get into questions, this is an action item. Is there a motion to approve the employee group health insurance?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Jackie and a second by Art. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members?
Shelley, thank you for bringing this forward. As you've noted, right, I mean, it's definitely, it looks like the average increase has been 2.4%, and average of last five is 3.8%, and this is at 10.5%. I know you mentioned healthcare and other costs going up, but this definitely seems significantly higher than the past few years. Are there contributing factors kind of beyond the past three years that are really spiking it and that are really having us move to this higher level?
Yeah, again, it's really where our claims are in a self-funded plan. And we utilize both the benefits consultant, as well as health partners, underwriters, right, do projections for us. So it's been kind of coming and then kind of suppressed by COVID. So when we were setting premiums at 7% for 2019-20, then utilization dropped, right, for a couple of years because of some of the elective procedures not happening during COVID. And so it kind of kept our claims down a little artificially. And so again, that coming back, just the inflation, I think we're seeing across the board. If you look at our last 12 months of pharmacy spend, for example, and costs are up about 13%. So some of it is just, you know, ingredients for things that we're facing everywhere. So it's kind of that combination of things. And again, that the plan has really kept a good reserve that's the target the board sent to cover, you know, if we have claims runout and what we would expect in worst-case scenario before stop-loss insurance kicks in. So those are the considerations the committee made when making this recommendation is to try to keep to that target reserve so that we have that there in future years and don't have to face something more significant down the road.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, we have a motion by Jackie and a second by Art. All those in favor of approving the employee group health insurance, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries on a seven-zero vote. Thank you. And next on the agenda, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Krieger to introduce the Cultural Family Advocates Employee Appreciation Week, March 13th through the 17th.
Okay, thank you. So I'll read off the statement and then ask for your approval. So whereas cultural family advocates service a bridge between school, culturally and ethnically diverse students and families to increase awareness and participation for academic and social growth while keeping their own sense of cultural identity. Whereas cultural family advocates increase awareness, understanding, and education for staff and how to work with the unique needs of diverse students, parents, guardians, and caregivers. Whereas there are 20 cultural family advocates who primarily support American Indian, Black and African-American, Latino, Somali, African, and Middle Eastern students and families. Whereas each cultural family advocate supports multiple schools and is strongly connected with each of their communities. And whereas cultural family advocates provide technical assistance on how to improve communication to other languages to serve our diverse community. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 196, Rosemont, Apple Valley, Eagan Public Schools, hereby extends its appreciation to cultural family advocates of District 196 for the vital role they play in supporting the education of our students to reach their full potential, and declares March 13th through the 17th, 2023, to be Cultural Family Advocates Employee Appreciation Week in District 196.
Excellent. This is an action item. So is there a motion to approve the resolution that Superintendent Krieger just read pertaining to our Cultural Family Advocates Appreciation Week?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There was a motion by Bianca and a second by Suchin. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? How about questions or comments from board members?
Let's just thank them, because what a wonderful job that they do. It's amazing to me, the skill that they bring, the caring that they bring, the help that they bring to our students and our families. So congratulations to all of them.
I, too, want to join Jackie and the rest of the board and just say, thank you. What a wonderful group of individuals. I mean, it's great to see the program grow, but it is just wonderful. If you get to meet these human beings, it's truly a delight. So just thank you. They are not just the face, but they're often the bridge into our communities to helping us build a more inclusive and well-connected community. So I am just deeply grateful to each of them and I'm really grateful that we have a program that can support the wonderful work they do.
Any other comments from board members? Great. I couldn't have said it any better than Jackie or Suchin. Just an amazing program, and we truly appreciate our cultural family advocates. With that, there was a motion to approve by Bianca, seconded by Suchin. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries on a seven-zero vote. Fantastic. All right, last on the agenda is school board and superintendent updates. Are there any items or updates that school board members would like to share? Seeing that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Krieger.
Okay. First, I want everyone to know that absentee voting for our bond referendum special election will begin on Friday, March 24th, and continue up to Election Day on Tuesday, May 9th. For more information, go to our bond referendum webpage at district196.org. On February 14th, a delegation of about 20 parents, students, staff, and school board members went to St. Paul to share our legislative priorities. We advocated for the legislation to provide adequate, stable, and predictable funding, fewer mandates, and support for a diverse and sustainable workforce of teachers and other school staff. We met with Governor Walzus, Lead Education Policy Advisor, three of the four chairs of the education committees in the Senate and House of Representatives, and most of the 14 legislators who represent District 196. We expressed concern over the number of bills that have been introduced, including many that would bring new policy mandates and others that would spend on new programming without taking care of basic funding first. Our two biggest requests of state leaders this session are to increase the general education funding formula by at least 4% per year and to tie future increases to inflation and to reduce the special education cross-subsidy, which was $33 million last year in our district alone. We value the partnership we have with our local legislators and are really thankful for their support. Please stay informed about what's happening at the Capitol this session and contact your legislators to share your opinions on education funding and policy issues. We will keep the public informed about what is happening as the session progresses. Next, I would like to share some information about property tax rates in fiscal year 2022. Of the 32 Minnesota cities with populations of 30,000 or greater, the 10 with the lowest total tax rates include five cities in District 196. According to data from the League of Minnesota Cities, Eagan had the lowest tax rate, followed by Apple Valley, second lowest, Lakeville, fifth lowest, Burnsville, sixth, and Inver Grove Heights, ninth lowest. The other three cities that are part of District 196, Rosemont, Coats, and Empire, are not included in this measure because they have populations under 30,000. Rosemont would be number two on the lowest total tax rate list, but is just under that 30,000 threshold for residents. So I want to end tonight's meeting with two pieces of interesting updates about District 196. First, District 196 is now the third-largest school district in Minnesota, according to official enrollment data for this school year that was recently made available by the Minnesota Department of Education. The data showed District 196 with 29,221 students just slightly higher than Minneapolis Public Schools. The two largest districts in the state are Anoka-Hennepin and St. Paul. The second thing I want to share about 196 is to recognize the former Empire Township on recently incorporating to become a city. They held their first elections for mayor and city council in February, and we are glad to have a new city as part of our district. Thank you.
Excellent. That brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Joel, seconded by Bianca. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? We are adjourned.